To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I used to sit in chair.
Got your mic on here. Turn it up, it's not on there.
It's on.
Get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have just one addition. The fire chief would like to talk to you about the use of the grant funds that they have. It's at the two twelve fund, I believe. So if we could add that under his approval of the purchase of the garage doors, maybe?
Okay, make that...
Six point one A?
Six point one A, that works fine. You have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion. Second?
Okay. Motion passes. Start with, uh, public comments. Anybody have any public comment this time? Seeing none, we'll go to, um, four, consent agenda. Item four point one, approval of the minutes for the June thirteenth, twenty sixteen council meeting. Four point two, approval of the minutes for the May tenth, twenty sixteen park board meeting. Four point three, additional claims for the month of July, excuse me, June. Four point four, approval of the sheriff's department report for the month of May, twenty sixteen. Any others I need to vote for discussion?
One question on the claims, the spraying equipment. Was that like a five hundred and fifty dollar piece of equipment that got taken out of two?
What, what claim number is it?
Um...
See where the claim numbers are on the left? Just claim number and then number and who it's to. Who was it to?
One, two, seven, seven, six, on the Visa. One, two, seven, seven, six.
Roads and parks, okay?
It was repairs and maintenance and then new equipment. So, and they're both the same number, so I didn't know if that was like a five hundred and fifty dollar piece of equipment.
At two, at two seventy-five for each. It's two seventy-five into each one, so it was five hundred and fifty dollars piece of equipment, yes. Yeah, spray equipment. So this came out of, um, streets and this came out of parks.
Right.
And then, so it was total of...
For the change and the new building.
So it was a total of five hundred and some dollars, yes.
Okay. That's all I had.
Anything else need to be discussed? Hearing none, we'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, no names. Move on to item five, staff reports. Five point one, public works department.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, you have the public works, um, staff report in your packet and Kyle is also present at the meeting, so if you have any questions for him, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them.
Hearing none, we'll move on to five point two, the city engineer.
Mr. Mayor, council members, also you have the city engineers report in your packet. Dave is not present tonight, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to convey those questions to him and get the answers for you.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the sheriff's department. Question to the sheriff's department?
Nope, we have nothing from the sheriff's department.
And five point four, the city administrator.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my staff report is in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about, um, any of the, my activities for the past month.
So, we didn't get the grant, the outdoor recreation grant?
Correct.
Did you contact them for the feedback?
I had, no, I hadn't, hadn't, because I submitted it to them early. I submit it to them before and they give me feedback before I submit it.
Yeah.
But the reason we didn't get it, I think, and I could contact them for feedback, if you look at, um, the amount of requests was, uh, two point two million and there was only five hundred and eighty thousand dollars to be dispersed.
You requested two point two million?
No, the total was two point two.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I know what you mean.
So I think that...
Okay.
We, we had requested forty some thousand.
Yeah. But I, I read in the rejection letter, and I can't find it right now in this packet.
It's the third piece in my report.
It's like the third piece?
Yeah. I can read it.
I have some Google Doc open there. But yeah, it just said, if you want, um, there it is, if, what does it say at the end? If you like information regarding your application or the grant program? Nope, that isn't it. I thought there was one that said something about feedback, but that's all right. I just think it's...
I mean, I can.
Like, yeah.
Sure.
Because they sometimes have really good information about why you, you know, what you need to change so that you can get the grant next time.
Sure.
That was just for me on hers.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to six point one, approval of the purchase of garage doors for the fire station.
Mr. Mayor, council members, fire chiefs requesting to install two more garage doors on the fire station. The cost for the doors and installation is two thousand and sixteen dollars. There remains four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars in the repairs and maintenance line item of the fire station budget. So that we do have the funds, but, um, we're looking for a motion to approve the purchase. And Rod is present, if you have any questions of him.
How many more are left to replace? So these two and there'd be two more? Are you, I heard that one side door wasn't working, is that you guys fixing that or is it fixed now? I just, people were saying they couldn't get into it.
The locktus?
Locktus.
The door.
So this is pretty much the same as what they were, yeah, the other ones were. And we thought we were gonna do like two a year. Did we only do two? I thought we've done four. I think we did three. Oh, okay, all right. There's more doors than what I realized. I just think that whole thing is one door.
Okay. Cool. I'll make the motion to replace the doors. I'll second it.
Okay, it's a motion to replace the doors, a second. Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Is that everybody? Where is aye? Okay. Motion passes, we'll replace the doors in the fire department.
So Mr. Mayor, council members, the, the, um, fire chief maybe can address you more, but if you look at the back page of my, um, report has the two twelve fund, the fire department grants and contributions. There's fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents in there. And he wants to address you on how he'd like to spend some of that money.
How would that look different than their white shirts and their black pants, their...
Well, you can use them naturally, uh, for a caller, you know, all blue or black.
Use it for a call, would you?
So, yeah, um, like for...
Sorry, I can...
...you know, as far as if you would have a fire call, you could operate with a fire call, you know, and you wouldn't have to really bother getting the white shirt black.
Okay.
And it's, um, that's, you know, like we, I don't know, you see, you have a fire or whatever, you know, paint department, you know,
How much are these?
Um, well, the total for all of them would be around ten thousand dollars.
And what fund are we looking at?
The two twelve grants and donations fund?
Okay. I think it's great that they take it out of there. It's their money. If the department decides to spend their donation money and their stuff like that on that, that's, I'm good with it.
Do you have, uh, uniforms and all, dress uniforms for wakes and that?
Does this include the jackets that, like Bob Carlson called me a while ago?
Okay. So then, um, for retired as well? Or, uh, do you call them?
What was the total?
Uh, total is...
Up to ten thousand?
Yeah.
I don't even see the fund, but didn't you say fourteen?
It was fourteen, eight, seventy-one, fifteen.
I probably, oh, there it is.
Where's the top?
Yep. If that's what you guys wanna do with your donated money and the stuff you've earned, that's... I'm good with it. Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, take a motion for that.
I'll make that motion to approve the purchase of, uh, those items that Rod just talked about. Sorry, I didn't make a list.
Can we put a limit on that, they're up to ten thousand or just up to their budget amount?
Up to fourteen, yeah.
Up to fourteen thousand? Three seconds for that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I'm not, I'm not staying on that. Still being sued along the fire department, I think, so, still a motion passing. No sir, thank you chief.
Thank you.
Okay, item six point two, snow removal contract for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Mr. Mayor, council members, last year the city council approved an extension of the current, which was the current snow removal contract with Widmer Construction for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen snow removal season at the same rate as the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen snow removal contract. For, for the period was from November first, twenty fifteen to April thirtieth, twenty sixteen. Widmer Construction is willing to extend the contract for another year with the city for the same rate as the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen snow removal contract. So that, that contract period then would be November first, twenty sixteen to April thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Staffs requesting council direction on either the extension of the contract or whether you wanna advertise for bids.
Extend it.
It'd be nice, we need a motion now.
I like them, they're good.
I'd make a motion to extend the contract.
Three seconds.
Second it.
Any discussion?
Kyle, you're happy with some?
Yeah, yeah, we're better at it each year, so.
Well, hopefully it's gonna snow.
No.
Hopefully not.
Actually, no, hopefully I won't care anymore about snow.
Last year went pretty smooth, I don't remember really getting any...
Yeah.
...mailboxes or, or really anything in general.
They show up. Good.
Call up procedures have been okay with getting them in and...
So I have, uh, Dave Hubert does a little one page of contract extension that I have Tony sign and we put it in the file, so, okay?
Okay.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No names, we'll call that one passing. Move on to six point three.
Mr. Mayor, council members, park board is recommending to the city council to construct a picnic shelter in Westridge Park. And this was the park where we applied for the outdoor recreation grant. We weren't successful in securing that grant, however, the park board wants to move forward with the park shelter. Park board's recommending that the city construct a twenty-four by twenty-eight shelter with a hip roof, twenty-four gauge steel roof panels, Thomas Clementson Concrete Masonry for the concrete work and Dalco Excavating for the site work. Well, we had only received one grant, or one quote on this for the outdoor recreation grant when we, uh, submitted it. So when I saw how much money it was, I went out and I solicited two more quotes. So one, the, one was from Flagship that we had received and the twenty-four by twenty-eight shelter was twenty-one thousand, five thirteen, just for the shelter. Clearwater Recreation was the other person that I, or company I reached out to and they're at twenty-two fifty-six. Saint Cray Recreation who I, for just the shelter, now I'm talking about, okay? So Saint Cray Recreation, we've used for our downtown park benches, we've bought picnic tables from them and they're also the ones that installed the big boy toys up in Discovery Park. Well, they come up with a price of thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. So you look at it and you think, wh-what's the problem here? So I had Martini look at it and he thought they were all the same. I had two building inspectors look at it and they agreed that it, they appear to be the same types of shelters. The shelters, it's the same one, the same crazy bidding, because if you look at the plans, if you look at the plans from the one company, um, they look almost the same. When you look at this one with the roof and you look at the one from Saint Cray Rec, it's the same one. So it's constructed the same. So I, I don't know why there's such a huge discrepancy in the cost, um, between the two, but it's almost eight thousand dollars different.
Well, so the optional, did you put the optional installation and...
If you look at my memo, it's got all of that on it. So I put the, the, I, and I broke it all out. If you look at the quotes, you have to break it out a little bit.
Oh, there it is.
So I put the twenty-four by twenty-eight shelter, I put the installation, the engineered drawings, the concrete slab and the grading really don't change because they're being done by one person and it comes out to be eight thousand dollars different. So I, I would recommend going with Saint Cray Recreation for twenty-eight, two eighty-five to construct this twenty-four by twenty-eight shelter. And then we, the park board's also recommending that two trash cans and four picnic tables be purchased for the shelter and the cost for those is right around four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two, which I did not get that quote from, um, Saint Cray Rec, but I would be happy to solicit another quote from them and see if we can save a little bit of money. I changed this to be one eighty-eight picnic table since that's the goal of that shel-, or park.
I like that.
And then three picnic tables that are regular picnic tables. The funds for the picnic shelter and trash receptacles and the picnic, um, tables would come from the twenty sixteen budget and part of it from the park two twenty fund. And the reason it would come from the two twenty fund is because we took, last year we were gonna do the volleyball courts and the volleyball courts didn't get completed, so that thirty-two thousand dollars got rolled into the park fund and, but we took, the volleyball courts came out of the twenty sixteen budget, so there's not enough in the twenty sixteen budget. If we would've taken the volleyball courts out of the two twenty fund, then there would've been enough for the picnic shelter. So it was, it's just a little bit of an accounting error, if you wanna call it that, for how we accounted for the expenses, that's all it is. So, um, that's how I would do it, I would take the, the most of the funds from, again, from the budget and then the balance from the two twenty fund. So I would, uh, request a motion authorizing the purchase and the installation of the park shelter for the total cost of twenty-eight, two eighty-five and the purchase of trash receptacles and picnic tables to, in a not exceed amount of four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two, knowing that if I can get them cheaper, I will.
Do I wanna make that motion?
Is there already, I'm sorry, I will.
Second? Okay, any further discussion?
Is there already a, um, uh, garbage receptacle up there?
There is, but we thought that there should be two by the picnic shelter, is what they wanted.
What kinda, what recepto, like, are they the kinds that we were gonna get that are so heavy that you can't even move them and then you just take the stuff out?
Yeah, that's the ones we're gonna get, yeah.
But they can move them.
Yeah, they move them and knock one over and...
And broke one, yeah.
Mm.
Down at the skate park, so yes. It would be the nicer looking cement ones that we had bought when you were in the park park.
Okay. I don't know. If you think you need two, you need two. My thought is two in a twenty-eight foot building would overkill or whatever.
Would it really, would there be, I'm nervous that like if people are trying to move them, if they're moving the picnic tables around to, are they gonna be in the way or does one?
Garbage cans probably would be on the outside of the building, o-off the slab to the, on the corner.
Okay, right.
Right.
And when could they start working on this?
I don't know the answer to that. We've had discussion, I've had discussion with the park board chair and a couple of the park board members about trying to backdate and, and get moving sooner on our projects so that we aren't completing projects at the end of the summer, so that we're doing things in, in May instead of in August, so that people can use them in the summer months. So that's the goal of this, of the, uh, park board to do that. I'm not sure how soon this will be up, if it'll be up by August. I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't know.
If it goes up this year, I'll, I'll be happy.
It'd be nice if it could be done even before fall, just so that people can, people will still use it in the fall.
Mhm. I like Kyle's idea, getting rid of that steel one and putting the new, new one more close to the playground equipment.
Okay.
I don't, I just don't think two are necessary inside there, I think one'll do it, but, I don't know, again, what do I know? Just my thoughts.
Any further discussion? Motion on the table would be to award the contract to Saint Cray Recreation for a total of twenty-eight thousand, two eighty-five with an additional not to exceed four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars for the four picnic tables and two trash cans. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
You were gonna check on the picnic tables and trash receptacles before you order?
Yes, I will try to get another price on them from Saint Cray Rec and see what they are, yeah.
The fences look good.
Do they? Yep.
Nice.
Yep.
By the basketball court? I didn't talk to him, but that's okay.
Oh, really? You know?
Oh, he, no. He's like, it's over, I, oh, saw it, pause it over, they paused it over, dude.
Yeah, I thought most of them paused it.
Who cares?
It's insured.
Insured.
Well, can I just ask you a question I forgot to ask with your stuff? Is, when's the volleyball net stuff? Too late, as soon as you leave.
I, I...
Too late, we're past that item.
Go wait till next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting.
Oh, it should be open Friday, it's my, I'm...
Oh, good.
She's gonna move it tomorrow and I got a few other things to do this week, but hopefully I have it up by Friday.
We already had a request from the church to use it, they wanna use it for some tournament. Uh, Pastor Glass called and so I let him know that it would be available Friday because I had checked with Kyle, so, yeah.
Oh, that's exciting.
Yep, so...
And then can we put something up on the Facebook page?
We'll put it on Facebook and we'll put it on the electronic sign and, yes, I can do that.
Perfect.
All right, moving on to six point four, discussion on office staffing hours.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, council members, city, I'm requesting direction from the city council on the staffing of the office. Before we hired Janelle, the deputy clerk, um, there were discussions with the current city clerk that I had about staffing of the office. And, um, the city clerk and I discussed how we would transition Janelle into her position as a deputy clerk. So the plan was for the current city clerk to work three days a week the first month, two days a week the second month and then transition down to one day a month after that. When I discussed it with the city clerk, um, that now the deputy clerk had been here a month and that she could transition down to her two days a week, she informed me she wasn't ready to transition to two days a week. She stated that maybe after the fourth of July, she would be willing to transition to those two days a week. So I need direction from you on the first issue is when does she transition to the two days a week? Second, she wanted the two days a week to be Monday, Tuesday. Um, the need is really for her to be here on Thursdays because when I talked to her about transitioning, I wanted her here on Mondays and Thursdays. Thursday's our payroll every other week and there are claims for the city council every other week. And until, um, Janelle has a little more comfort and I have a little more comfort with the payroll stuff, I would like to have, uh, the city clerk to be here on Thursdays. Um, the deputy clerk, she, she has caught on very well. I, I can't tell you how fast she's caught on, how wonderful it is to have her here. So, um, I'm, I'm convinced that she'll catch on to the payroll stuff too, but she's only done it once. So if Lois wants to work half a day on Thursday, that would be fine, or two hours on Thursday, whatever, but she needs to be here to, to assist with the payroll and then the other week with the claims until we're, till there's a comfort level with that. So my request of direct, is direction from you on when does she go to two days a week and what days are those gonna be? So, I would appreciate some direction from you because you hold the personnel function as city council.
All right. Any thoughts on that?
You know, I remember having this conversation about the transition down to, you know, or through the process and, you know, she agreed that, you know, she'd work a month and transition down. If she wants to work until the July fourth weekend, weekend of or before, that's fine.
That's next week.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
There's one more week.
So realistically, to the start of the next pay period, for whatever that would be?
Which is Thursday. And so she's taken this week off, she's off this week. So next week then, Tuesday will be our first day back, so then she should start working two days a week next week, after the fourth. And then they, could they be Mondays and Thursdays, is that...
Personally, I would leave that up to you to decide what is, what is going to be best. Like, you're here every day working with, with all the staff members and I would defer to your decision, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we wanna support Janelle in all the right ways and if she needs to be here Thursday, then we work around the rest of the week. You know, if Monday's real bad, when I had the conversation, if there's a lot of utility billing or bills coming in, she needs to be here Monday. Finish Monday and Thursday, but, you know, I don't care if you split it up to a couple of half a days in the full day.
So I can work with Lois on that and however she wants to. Because the next utility billing is a Monday, it's July eleventh. And so that's why they would do utility bills on the eleventh and then...
Maybe it's not forever, maybe it's the two days a week for, you know, and then, until she gets caught up.
Well, truly, only a month, right?
Yeah, a month.
Just for a month.
And then she goes down to one day.
One day a week, right. And that could be a half a day, a half a day on a, a Monday or a half a day on the day the utility bill's bought and a half a day, that Thursday to help with claims or to help with payroll.
And I'm fairly certain that Lois is always gonna be available if there is some, um, question or whatever on anything.
Mm.
You just call her and she'll either walk you through it and that's probably all it would take at that point.
Well, we also have...
Is to just have someone remind you how, what steps to take.
But we also have Banyan that we can call too, and they can walk us through the steps too. So I mean, because, yeah.
I mean, if it's a, you know, if it's an absolute that she absolutely does not or cannot work on that Thursday, then you'll get through it, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever works best for everybody.
Yes, I agree, so...
So could I have a motion that as of the week of fourth of July, she goes down to two days a week and that I work with her on what those two days a week should be?
I don't really, do you really need a motion for that or do you just...
I, I would like to have a motion.
Make a motion.
Second, let me second that motion. Is there more, any further discussion on that? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none, then motion passing.
Thank you.
Moving on to six point five, approval of concept for Watertown Mayor's school district to rent space.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have in front of you the contract. I sent you the contract that Rachel Bender had put together for the city. Um, they decided that they're gonna forego the survey process of the community and move right into the rental of the city hall space. But they've realized that they have twelve to fourteen children from the city of mayor right now using kids company, so they thought they can, they can start with that many kids then, coming here. So the total amount for the rent the city would be collecting would be two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars a month and possibly twelve months for a total of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The additional costs the city will have will be the paper products to the bathroom, janitor time and some utilities. The janitor's requesting an additional forty-two fifty a day and two more days a week, so the total for a month would be three hundred and forty dollars. And the school's requesting August first as a start date. I did talk to Rachel a little bit about what, whether they'd be willing to pick up some of this, um, janitor expense. I'm not sure that they are. Um, Tom thought he'd have to come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays now and then he comes in on Fridays and then Saturdays if there's something here on a weekend. So, um, city attorney has reviewed the lease agreement, he was reviewing it when I sent this out and is requesting the council approval on the concept of the rental with a final lease agreement to be presented at a future council meeting. So I'm requesting whether you wanna continue to move forward with this. Um, I can bring the final lease agreement to you in July, once we work out maybe the janitor expenses, um, if, if you still wanna move forward.
Do you know why, I don't know what the difference is, you have two thousand, six hundred and ten and, uh, Dave's got two thousand, nine hundred and fifty?
What was it in the one I, I gave you?
The new one?
From Rachel. One from Rachel? It's two thousand, six hundred and ten, so Dave put the amount in.
So Dave put the amount in?
Unless he put the, unless, what's he got?
Two thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
Two thousand, nine hundred and fifty, he added the three hundred and forty for the janitor.
Okay.
That's what he did.
Is that what the difference was?
That's what he did.
That's what he did. Two thousand six hundred and ten plus three hundred and forty is two thousand nine hundred and fifty. So he added the three forty to the jan- for the janitor, they had.
And, so, in the original one, were they aware that they were gonna have the three forty for the janitor?
They were, they were aware that there would be additional janitor fees. I told her I would get back to her and let her know what it was, and I did. And so then she's, you know, she said, she said, her email back to me was, well, he's there two days a week. I said, he'll have to be here two days a week, and then she responded with, well, you said he is there two days a week. And then I responded back to her, those two days a week are for Friday and one day on a weekend, and he's saying he needs to be here Tuesday, Thursday, and Rachel hasn't responded to my email yet.
If you look at this rent on number four under rent, says such additional services shall be built, intended at the rate of forty-two fifty per day.
So that's if he has to come in more than those two days a week. So if they have to come in three, then, then they're gonna have to pay the extra forty-two fifty.
So the three hundred and fifty dollars is for two days a week?
Three hundred and forty, two days a week, yep.
And he already charges us three seventy-five?
Five, correct.
Three seventy-five for the other two days a week.
Mhm. Sometimes it's more than two days, though, depending upon rentals. So if we got a Friday rental and Saturday rental, he has to come in between and clean and, and that does happen.
But, uh, okay. But he just gets a flat rate?
Right.
The amount, he, right, okay.
I'd like to move forward with trying to work out these fees.
Okay.
Um, I think this is gonna be a, a good adventure for the city. I looked at the income that we can generate and in the work session, there's income that we generate from rental. And I talked to Luann a little bit about the conflict and it'll be minimal conflict there. So I think this is a good deal.
I don't, yeah, I don't want to, um, lose them because of an extra hundred and seventy dollars a day.
Right, right, and that's what I'm wondering, if we wanna just take on the janitor fee out of the two thousand six hundred and ten that we're already getting, that extra three forty for the year, maybe, or month, maybe-
If there's any additional days after-
Then he pays the forty-two, then they pay the forty-two fifty if there's additional days after the two. Because we're still coming ahead, almost twenty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would wonder, I, what's-
It's part of the rental fee, yeah. So would you wanna, we wanna change the rental fee back to the twenty-six ten in the agreement that Hubert sent me and that's what I forward to them. And then that includes the janitor-
I mean, if it goes up at all, I would say just like maybe a hundred bucks to, to cover some of it. But I also wanna say, how many hours is he worked, I mean, Clemenson needs to sharpen his pencil.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money for, you know, I don't know what it ta- I mean, this is just a cleanup. He's not doing the heavy duty cleanup that he has to do after a wedding or an event, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't know, in the wi- in the winter it might be, there might be a lot of snow and stuff and-
Sure. Yep.
That, yeah.
Yeah.
In the summer it might be lighter, but it might be worse in the winter.
Mhm.
Or whatever, you know.
Can we ju- a couple of things I was just thinking about. I wanna make sure that you guys, the city staff, know, um, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, the kids company also knows. I'm pretty sure they're gonna have to have their own phone line.
Mhm.
Because as a parent, I have to call if I'm gonna have somebody else pick up my child or if they're not gonna be there. So, my guess is they already have that figured out, either they'll probably install another phone line, it, I'm-
I'll check on it.
I don't want them to be calling the city to get ahold of somebody like kids companies. I wanna make sure they have that communication figured out. Um, just 'cause I don't want, and when I go pick up Caitlin at the school, in the hallway, the kids are never in the hallway, unless they're, got an excuse for the bathroom or go to, um, a different room.
Okay.
So they're very contained, like they would be in just this room or just the, up in there or the gym or outside and they have like color coding which room, they could depict their activity. It'll be a little different, cause it's smaller here, but I just wanna make sure that it's minimal disturbance to the staff. But they're, the kids are only gonna be here for a short period in the morning, because you guys are open till eight. And most of them should be gone by then, because the school starts at eight fifteen. And then in the afternoon, you're done at four thirty and kids company goes till six, but they probably won't even get here till three thirty.
I think it's three at six.
Yeah, three to three thirty, depending on the, on how they do the budget.
So it's an hour.
So it's an hour. So I think it's gonna be minimal disruption for you guys, but I wanna make sure that we're addressing those things, because we're still, there's still a business here, there's still this, you know, city or residents needing to come in. So, but then we also just need visual about when residents come in, that there are children here, so that they're not going into the spaces they shouldn't.
Right, right.
For safety purposes, you know, like just out of school, you have to check in.
Yep.
So, okay.
No, I think moving forward with trying to work those details out.
That's great, fantastic.
You know, the, the additional janitors cost and I think that's a wash either way we do that. We do have paper utility costs. There are a little bit of unknown, the additional heating costs, the additional electricity.
And- Toilet paper and paper towels are gonna be an expense that we don't realize right now, because somebody's, they're gonna be using the restrooms more than we do.
Yeah, so-
But, you know, that's why after a year, we talked about that, I talked about that with Rachel, that once we have a year under our belts and we see how much more we use, then we may have to adjust the rent, and she was fine with that.
So what about summer, cause summer they don't have school?
She's saying that she's not sure if they would do summer or not, because, uh, um, if there's enough kids, then they would, but if there isn't, then they wouldn't, so-
And they would just, yeah, every, or you would go back to Watertown for the summer.
Right, and so then that's why when we do this and figure on the income, I would take up the three months for the summer, because you don't know if you're gonna get it or not. Just as we figure the budget.
So then you do have some sort of tracking in place that you can do?
Sure.
You know what it costs you now, so that-
We know how much we spend on toilet paper last year in a year.
Right.
Right.
Right, and so when it comes to this year, we'll have six months more of toilet paper and paper products
Perfect.
cleaning products, but we'll, we'll, we'll be able to, we'll be able to come up with a better idea than, than just trying to guess right now. They're gonna use twenty rolls toilet paper in a month or whatever, and ten rolls of hand paper, you know.
And they're still gonna use, do the ECFE thing here, too, of course?
We talked about that, too, yes.
So if it does go up a hundred dollars, um, a month, it's an additional twenty-two, or, uh, one thousand two hundred dollars, it's like twelve hundred dollars, that should cover some of it, um-
Would you want them just to cover, so it's three hundred and forty dollars a month, should I try to get another a hundred and seventy from the school district for the janitor and split it with them?
See if they're open to that.
Half, okay.
But I don't want it to be the breaking point.
Yeah.
No, neither do I.
The situation, I think this is such a great thing for the city and for the residents and for the school district.
Yeah, I mean, they came up to the plate, I mean, we had the discussion and told them we felt that, you know, they disconnect and they're definitely trying to address that, so.
Where did, uh, Rachel come up with her money, her, her, um-
She came up with her hours by what we rent. So we've charged eighteen fifty an hour for minimum of two hours. I believe this is how she came up with it, cause I went back and refigured it, I figured out how many hours she had a day and then that times the days, the twenty days in the month comes up to about what she is requesting for, for rent, so.
Hmm.
So we will lose some rent from the Lutheran High School. Uh, it's been, that's been minimal, because they won't be able to use it for basketball. Some years it's been three hundred, four hundred, two years ago it was, this last year it was seventeen hundred, but you're gaining twenty thousand dollars. So I did go meet with Joel Land Screener and let him know that we were probably gonna be doing this. He unders- absolutely understood, appreciated that I came up there and gave him a heads up in early June, so that he could, they could figure something else out.
We were losing them anyway, once their field houses go up, so.
Right, right, yep.
My-
And he says, you know, we're numbers people, Luann, we get it, I get it, I get where you're going with the, the income and the rent and I understand that.
That's not just bad, it's just providing a service to the community that is needed.
Right, 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 yep.
I'm excited that it's kinda moving-
Yeah.
Fairly quickly, which is very nice, cause I was nervous that they were gonna do the survey and there wasn't gonna be enough people. So I'm excited that they're, you know, already doing, you know-
The contract.
Yeah, they have one, Gavin's moving over.
So they meet tonight as a school board, so she's gonna present this to the school board to see where they're at on it. So I will bring it back to the, maybe first meeting in July for your final action and I'll try to work out these details and see what we, where, where we can work out what we can. And see if I can get Tom to come down, maybe to one day a week, extra.
Or charge less.
Okay.
So she, she knew she's gonna present to the school board with a possibility of another three fifty a month, or?
I let her know that there were extra janitor fees, I don't know if she took that to them or not.
Alright, alright.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Totally. Alright, moving on to item number seven.
I had nothing further information.
So do we have to vote on that, or we, is it like a team vote?
Well, do you wanna vote, whether, do you wanna vote on the concept and that I continue to work, or do you just wanna give me direction? It's up to you, you can, you can, I was asking for a motion operating the concept of the rental to the Watertown Mayor School District for the use of city hall with a formal lease agreement to be presented at a future council meeting.
I think it is the direction of, you know, where we wanna go with it.
Alright.
Alright, uh, so I think it's number eight, council reports, any, any intended meetings or anything from members, anything they wanted to share?
About the park shelters, are we moving forward with that? Park board examine, they wanted to get that done. And we talked about the parkage and the last week.
Anybody else, any meetings or anything, I personally haven't, haven't gone to anything, so. The last Excel meeting, I didn't think really had anything on that was of interest to us, so didn't attend that, so. Alright, any other business that needs to be discussed? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry, you're right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, or hearing no, no one knows, we'll adjourn the meeting. We'll move on to the work session, unless somebody wants to take a quick break.
Nope.
Okay, go ahead and open up the work session.
So Mr. Mayor, we're gonna pull number seven from this, um, work session about the discussion on the build drew sewer, cause Martini isn't here.
Okay.
Okay, um, and from Jaguar is here? Rod?
Yeah, I'm Rod.
Jonathan Rod, Mr. Rod?
Yeah.
Wherever you wanna be, you wanna come up to the podium, or you can sit in the chair, uh, whatever.
We're just casual.
We are casual in the work session. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, this was an item that you had requested, um, for me to bring Jaguar here for the meeting, so he was gracious enough to come tonight to the meeting, so.
Alright, well, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, um, you know, we, uh, began, excited to be, uh, several times and we finally had some time to come up here. Um, I'm not exactly sure what you'd like for me or Jaguar, but I can answer any questions, give you some ideas what we can do.
I think we'd like Jaguar to come to town.
So I understood.
And what we need to do to try to make that happen, or what we can do to help make that happen.
Well, we, as you know, we're, we're overlaying Norwigan America right now. And, uh, that's been a four year process to get that going. Um, and in the three years prior to working with them, we've sent out surveys and, and, uh, tried to get customers interested in what we do. So we're working a little bit with the city to create a questionnaire to send out to their customers. So that's where we would like to start.
Okay. What are you looking for on that questionnaire?
Uh, I could send something to them.
Send something to them?
Focus right in on what the customers are looking for, you know, what they have, what they're looking for as far as data content, internet content, um, content. You know, Bruce and I have talked before, up in Hollywood Township, years ago.
I think right now, the city's kinda limited to a, to a couple of companies.
Yeah, to it.
And, you know, I think you got your problem solved, um-
Well, not really.
Our, our problems don't exist.
Yeah, my, my was terrible.
With our service, so we're just looking at the future services, you know, the fiber.
So our fear is, uh, we're a small company trying to get larger and we want to grow. And we wanna go into a community that we're gonna be able to sustain our business as well as help customers. And with two providers, you never know what they can do. They can get some different funds and bring in different types of services, especially when they know that we're coming, that's what we're usually at.
Well, our, the problems that I've personally having and a lot of other people in our neighborhood, it's just their, this other company's growing too big, too fast and they can't, they can't, they don't have the broadband space, they just, they just can't, there's no consistency to service.
But that's frontier and you want a home that's stable.
One of those two, yeah, and, um, I think people are just looking for another option for, you know, stable internet. It's been, it's been a real frustration for a lot of people.
That's something that we have, unfortunately, is that very constantly, um, the process. Um, because we have to construct everything, as you know, Bruce, you're right here at Hutt, but for us to build fiber to your place, it's, you know, just, uh, throwing out a number of ten thousand dollars to do that. If we have to build that infrastructure and follow the movements, then we don't just build one location, we try to build as much as we can, so.
So would it be helpful for you to come to our pre-con meetings when we're bringing in new development, so that you could be part of that whole group and, and putting in fiber to the home as we're constructing the new development?
Absolutely.
So we have that-
That's something that we can do, um, going into some new infrastructure.
Yep.
As a whole system existing, like you're, I noticed that you're building a lot of homes out here, you have that over the years. Um, that's where we can really help out, working together with some joint trench, uh, communities.
And so then as you, as you come into the community and you start to, you grow, then you can start to add the people that are already in the community, eventually.
Uh, kind, sorta, cause then there's that franchise thing.
Yep.
And you have a franchise with-
New Telecom.
New Telecom, yeah, so we'd have to talk about a franchise, that would be something that we have to work with, that always takes a lot of time, just legal stuff.
Is there a franchise agreement with New Telecom or Frontier currently?
I'm not sure about Frontier, but we do with New Telecom.
What does that mean?
Franchise agreement is where we allow them to be in our right of way to provide services to the, to the residents. For TV service, right.
So it does dual telecom, does the operative?
They do internet too, no, they don't do dish. They do in- internet, yeah, cable and internet.
They offer their own TV. So they would have a franchise.
Right.
Is that fran- is that franchise agreement for?
Twenty years, I think. It's forever.
Yeah.
I think we just renewed it here, I, and I wanna say time flies when we're having fun, I wanna say five years ago or so. Do you remember, it might have been even a little bit longer than that? So, but I think it's still, I, I think in the franchise agreement does not preclude us from entering into a franchise agreement with another company.
Correct, you can have as many franchises as would like, it's just, you know, you know, you're beating up on each other after a while.
Right.
Uh, which is good, competition's good, we're already seeing that in Norwigan America where media companies are going in rates. You know, and people don't like that, you know, they've done that before, it's a good business.
Um, so what do you have, like what, what is you, what are you, I mean, are you offering T, it would be TV?
Telecom, internet and television service. So that's the play you hear about, so we're a teleph- telephone company or a telecommunications company that provides all of our information over fiber optics. So we have to construct it to your home. And you can do that high speed fiber optic connection, which is, um, you know, a lot different than the service that you get today over copper or wireless, um, whatever high speed.
So what do we need to do to, to help this process move along?
Well, I will, um, I know we've been talking about this for quite some time, we've made a presence, you know, with, you know, with the Carver County project, I don't know if you remember that, when we developed the infrastructure and put the infrastructure in town, in town, and then the county, um, that was five years ago now, I believe, and we've connected many customers in Carver County with our services and Carver County services. So we, we were moving this way, we're, uh, have been in Laconia, Carver, Chaska, a lot of Chanhas, we're working on a lot of big business and Norwigan America, so eventually, you know, we wanna have business in the whole, uh, county, we just have to- We just have to cut out these certain times, if we do that. So what I need to do is to put some numbers together and, and find out what it's gonna take, you know, financially for us. Because we have to, you know, take care of that capital expenditure. And then working with you and the city to, um, find out what kind of business it is. And I can give that back to, uh, my, my boss, the CEO, and say, just, except if there's one. I'm not sure what year or what happened.
Mm-hmm.
Just because we're, we're just, we're very busy, we're in twenty different counties now, and we're working every, and everywhere, all the time.
So why aren't other companies doing cyber optics? Is, why, why does it seem like you guys? Or is it just cause you guys are willing to put in that?
Other companies are, um, we're just, um, we started as a fiber optic company and have been growing. And have some financial backing, so very expensive. So we were able to do it, I guess, but we try to pick the right places to do that. So if you get into the metro area, it's very expensive to do, out in the rural communities, um, to go, um. Shouldn't say easier, but more cost effective for us. Like in the economy, twelve thousand homes, and we're doing fiber to the home, then they give to the house. And, uh, I'm sure that's something that you guys would like.
But you had a partnership with Carver County too, that's why you, how you ended up in Carver County, right?
We did, yes.
Yeah. With the fire, for the fiber.
And we provide the boys, they provide the data, um, to the, um, public room. And deal with private things, and then we offer phone and internet data, uh, take care of the data.
So how did NYA get chosen to, to get fiber laid in their community, and some cities don't, or how does that work?
It was along, uh, with them, it was kinda interesting, because we had a couple of routes going in town, um, from north and south. And a couple of routes going west, so it just made sense, um, financially to build there.
Okay.
Um, the number of homes, and, uh, the, the existing fiber that was there, and we had a, a number of businesses at the time. And so it kinda helped, so, and, uh, help us in some.
Did, um, New Germany, are they being, are you laying fiber for the community there?
Not yet, that's another one on the list. So everybody, everybody wants it.
Actually, I was told on the sewer project went in, you went in with it, but you did not.
The sewer?
No, the sewer project in New Germany.
Oh, no.
You didn't go in with them.
Not from my knowledge.
Um, I don't know where this developer is currently laying, are they putting in utilities yet?
Uh, sixth edition they are, they're building roads, so I don't know if they're doing utilities yet. When do they do utilities?
After the.
Roads, so I can get you in contact with, it'd be sixty some homes, because they're coming in for the seventh edition. To the July fifth planning commission for preliminary plat, so that next section will be done too. So I can put you in ti, contact with them.
Are you in, are they interested in limits then?
Yes. Yes.
Would you be interested in putting a conduit in to pull the fiber later?
Or would you be interested in laying the fiber?
Um, both, you know, to us, we could do the same thing.
Okay.
Um, the biggest thing is the franchise, we could offer phone and internet to the customers, it's not, we could always add TV every later time.
I think you're gonna find that we're a captive audience for, for a decent, for a real rep, I mean, a, a good working internet provider here, that's something that we really.
We get, get calls every day from there, we honestly do. And we have to tell everybody we're sorry, you know, if you're right on our, right on our fiber line, we can get the service, but. When you're in those subdivisions, we have to build around, follow the events, and, um, it becomes very costly, but, uh, for us to do.
Well, we'd like to do something, so if there's anything we can do to help that process along, cause there's snow, cause we want it to happen.
So I can, I'll, I'll send you a, a, some, a type of survey.
Okay.
Um, um, just to your folks here in town.
Yep.
And, um, we do the demographics studies, uh, we officially do, and, uh, just numbers.
We should probably try to focus too on the moving forward, and get at least put in for.
In the hidden bricks and cement edition, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and those, those are, um, for us, they're easy to film.
Yep.
As opposed to considering just these areas.
So I'll get, I'll get you in contact with the developer on that, so that you can get in the joint trench with them when they get to that point. I'll send you that information.
You said that's fiber right to the house, too, that's not corporate fiber, what's it cost for? How do you, how do you build that out? Is that per linear foot? When you figure that out, or how do you, how do you figure out what the cost is to?
For you?
Yeah.
We don't charge you.
Well, I mean, for, what's your cost to, I mean, maybe you can't even say, but.
Like, and, it, it all depends, um, you know, ten bucks a foot.
Okay.
So that's how it adds up pretty quick. And that's with, uh, that's with fiber and conduits, and then we add handles, and then it starts placing bolts, and installers, and. Of course, our sales add up, make a bunch of money. So, you know, it's, uh.
Quite the investment on your end.
Yeah, it is, but, um, you know, the return is good, and, and my customers are happy, I think, you know, some folks up there that, um, around town that have service with us, so.
Alright, well, we'd like to make something happen, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Hear from you then, I suppose.
Tomorrow morning?
Okay.
By ten o'clock.
And we'll hear back when.
Ten fifteen.
Before, uh, before the holidays.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to number two, walk through the community sector.
This is, uh, Nikki wanted to do this. Okay, so. Um, we won't take a ton of time, but, um, I walked the outside of the building, and I walked inside, just because I think for budgeting purposes. I think it's important for us to see, there's a lot of things I didn't notice, um, that need some attention at some point in time. You know, and if we're renting this building out, you know, trying to get more revenues in and using the space. I think it's important that we also, you know, maintain it, and I think that, um, I don't know what you, what's really done in the past, but, um. I literally have three pages of things that I kinda ran across, so, I don't know if you guys wanna just, if it's okay, if we just kinda walk through. And just kinda look at it.
That's a good idea, really.
Cause when you don't look at it, you don't see it, I don't know.
Okay.
So we're going on a, a little, um, field trip? I know, it's close here, but it's the only way you can see.
Open it anyway.
As long as you got the press with us, it doesn't matter.
You leave your camera by it. Well, I wanna document what we're finding.
So I can come up with some numbers on some of the stuff, see if we can do some of it, and.
Well, just make a list, and we have to prioritize. A lot of it's aesthetic, and maybe we can't afford it, maybe something aesthetic doesn't cost that much.
Okay.
But I think the safety things are the things that I would go after first.
Well, and I think the painting and stuff too should be pretty early, in game to, you know, to get Kyle to paint it.
If it doesn't cost that much, yeah, yeah, those kind of little things. But, um, and I can, um, maybe copy some.
Before you leave, well. Yeah, we'll see, if Kids Company comes in, I think it's, uh, worth it to look into those doors to see if they can use that, that, that entrance.
Yeah, maybe that will.
Front entrance, okay.
And they can use that area to keep all the.
Their junks.
Mm-hmm. Let me, let me get the locksmith guy here and see what he says, huh?
Yeah.
Cause we're gonna have to rekey the office anyway, because.
Probably just keep the same doors, yeah, and just get a.
Get a key lock on them, and because the key that opens council chambers, or opens the office doors, I'm not giving them a key to the office doors. But I'll have, so I'll have to have the office door rekeyed, and when I have him come and do that, then I, I'll have him look at those doors. I mean, I'll do it in the next week or two.
Um, I totally forgot what I was gonna say.
Thank you.
That's alright. Oh, do they have to have someone come and inspect, like, you know, they're, I, I mean, it is a government.
Department of Health, I would imagine they maybe do. Someone from Department of Education probably has to come and check.
They're accredited, so they'll probably have to have some sort of.
I would think. I think somebody would.
But they don't seem too concerned, I think that.
No.
You know.
Yeah.
I think they're, I think the superintendent's very adamant about trying to get something here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'll see what they say if they do have to have any, cause I would say those handicap issues, and. Course, that can be addressed by coming in the other door.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, the walkway with the bumps and the uneven, that's dangerous.
But even coming in the Star T, they can still get access to the ramp for handicap accessibility. They can go down through the gym and come around and up.
Yep.
For handicaps.
About getting in.
Oh, okay, and the bump you're talking about out here.
Yeah. There's no step down there, is there?
No.
So just a bump.
It's straight in, yeah.
Yeah, maybe they could. Okay.
Alright.
I think you guys.
Alright, capital improvement plan for twenty seventeen.
So I provided you with a proposed twenty seventeen capital improvement plan in your packet. I don't know if you wanted to start and go. I really just moved everything forward a year, um, on the water and sewer projects, because, um, slip flooding, we're gonna keep doing like we always do. Um, but most of the other projects were driven by population, if you remember, and the population hasn't reached the twenty seven hundred yet. Um, so those remain the same for water and sewer. Well, these I can give them to you if you want, if I'm ever set. Do you wanna go through them line by line, or what do you wanna do?
Anybody?
I don't.
You know, like Public Works, so these numbers that we have in here for twenty seventeen will be what will be put into the budget for twenty seventeen. And that's why I need you to know, if this is what you wanna use, then I'll just use them. That's what we'll use. So again, you know, he's proposing of replacing the hustlers all for Public Works, um, for twenty seventeen. Public facilities still remain the fire facility and the community center for twenty five thousand for twenty twenty. Um, the park board went through theirs, they're talking about doing the public, the parking area to and from Highway twenty five to Meadow Park. The curving in Meadow Park, park shelter and park trees, this all totals a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty. However, they're just requesting fifty eight thousand dollars, and they're gonna take fifty of it from the, um, two twenty fund if they choose to do. The, um, row, the Meadow Park, the road into Meadow Parkway. So they've put these on as their items, but they're only gonna request fifty eight for ta, on the tax levy. Same with the fire department, he's got turnout gear again for ten thousand with a high priority, and that's in the new equipment. Usually line item of the fire department, so that's all I had, and I'll just use these numbers then for the twenty seventeen budget as I continue to compile that for you. Your review. Unless there's someone, uh, glaring things that you don't agree with. So then on the twenty seventeen budget, the utility bills have been averaged, I averaged the water and su, the wa, the, I'm sorry. The gas and electric bills for the past three years, and that's what I averaged and gave you for the amounts. Do you want me to continue to do that for the utility bills? For the lights and the gas?
Working okay?
Well, in the past, we always just took six months history and then divi, and multiplied it by two, and then added the increase in. So it seems like it's been okay, doing it that way. We have a, had a couple of years when, if it's not as cold, then, you know, you aren't. So we could get hit with a cold winter that might be more, but we don't know that, so we can budget.
Last winters has been above average.
Right.
So three years, I think the year before that was a decent one.
Yep.
So it, it's gonna bring your average up for the last two years, just cause we didn't have a deep freeze, we didn't have one this year.
Right.
So we just have to keep that in mind, and we, maybe we should just always account that it's gonna be a cold winter, and not include warm.
What I can do is I can do it both ways. I can average it, and then I can do it based on six months. And then like, Excel Energy is proposing a rate increase for next year of like six percent, I think, so we should probably account for that.
Perfect.
Yep.
One thing under utility bills, now that the Public Works has their own building, and they use water and sewer.
Yep.
We should do that on all facilities, because now that we're gonna be renting this building, it'd be nice to know the water consumption.
And we can, we have a meter here, so we know what it is.
So we just add it to it.
Okay.
Even though it's a wash.
Okay.
It's good information.
On to the buildings, okay. Move on to the next one.
Yes, ma'am.
How should the deputy clerk's wages be divided? Right now, we divide the city clerk fifty sewer, fifty water. Um, do you want hers a quarter sewer, a quarter water, or an half general fund? Because I'm not sure Lois should be fifty fifty either, because she does building permits, and, you know, there's revenue from the building permits. We, we took in a hundred and eleven thousand dollars last year in building permit revenue. Thirty three percent of that got paid back to Metro West, so we ended up with over sixty some thousand dollars. Part of their duties is to review those building permits, so that maybe at budget time, instead of doing, like I've always done, at the twenty and the twenty. The twenty for the revenue and the twenty for the expenses, we adjust that, so the revenue is higher than the expenses. So that we're using some of those building permit fees to pay some of the wages, and that it's not just giving us extra money, that we're using that money. So if you want me to make that adjustment, I can, but I'd like to know how you want me to figure her wages for the general fund. Or if you wanted a third, you want thirty three percent across the board, thirty three percent water, thirty three percent sewer, thirty four percent, um, general fund, I can do that too. I would like some direction on that.
No, I think when we did, uh, water and sewer rates, we put her wage in there, fifty for water, fifty for sewer.
Right.
Which we wanna take and back that down a little bit, and I talked to Luanne about a third, a third, and a third seems pretty consistent with. You know, you do the water and sewer utility billing, you do the data entry.
Yep.
With the rates go, or the bills coming back in, you do the deposits, that's all water and sewer.
Right.
And you, you still have permits.
Right.
For water and sewer connections, so there is a lot more water and sewer than you, when you really think about it.
Probably about fifty percent of the call, or probably seventy five percent of the calls are about water and sewer bills.
Yeah, so if we bill a third of it back to the general fund for elections and that other stuff like.
Okay.
I think that's pretty consistent.
And that's how I'll calculate out the budget, and you can look at it, and you can make adjustments if you want.
That sounds fair.
Okay. Council change in salary pay. Again, council has not had a salary increase since, it was two thousand and eight. February twenty eighth, two thousand and eight, which would've taken effect in two thousand and nine. You do, uh, January first, two thousand and nine. So if you wanna change it, it won't take effect until twenty seventeen, after the election, so I don't know. You know, people talked about that at one of the past meetings, that it, it needed to be looked at, I'm just bringing it forward to ask if you want to add something to the budget or not.
I'd rather see, we need to make staff changes in, in pay, I'd rather see that in ours.
So then that's.
Under council change, I, I would agree with Eric. Do we need, do any of the other boards, the park board, or those?
The per diem, that's how you would change that. The per diem is thirty dollars right now, do you wanna make it more?
No.
That's pretty generous.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Okay.
Pretty good per hour.
Mm-hmm.
Two hours for, park board is more, I mean, they're more involved, they have a lot more on their plate, but I still think thirty bucks a time is good.
Okay, so then the next thing is staff change in salary. Are we gonna increase salaries? Do I put something in the budget, knowing that that doesn't mean everybody's gonna get an increase, but do you wanna see a salary increase in the budget? Or do you wanna do something on health insurance?
Again, a lot of this conversation in my head was before even Kids Company was coming, but, you know, my son has a birthday in the winter. Well, what if we were, instead of, I, I didn't wanna pay two hundred dollars to rent the gym in the upper part.
And fifty.
You know, two fifty for a whole day, when I only would need it for three hours, and you put in a cleanup fee, like, if you, you know, you. If we can provide the cleanup stuff, I, I did the VFW, if I cleaned it up myself and it met their standards. They did not charge me the cleaning fee of like a hundred and twenty five dollars.
Yeah.
But, or, or I could just pay the hundred and twenty five dollars and they had the cleaning crew come in, you know. But we have to make sure we provided and showed where is the mop, where is the, you know, like the things that need to be done for it to be cleaned. To allow people to have, rent it for three hours on a Saturday in the winter, you know, and you would be able to have the kids run around on the gym floor. Bring some balls to play basketball, and then serve birthday cake up on the upper level.
So would you like me to go out and see if I can find out if other cities do birthday parties and what the fees are, and bring that back to you?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, birthday party was just an example, but, or, like my mom's celebration of life, it would be, I would've loved to have it here. And I'd just bring in my, catered my food, you know, brought my food in and had it up here. I mean, I had emailed Lois and, um, you know. It was very specific, like you can't touch the gym floor, and, you know, it was, it was very intimidating to me, so I.
So I did actually, I went to Chanhassen and I rented a room for fifteen dollars an hour.
Yeah.
For three hours. Now granted, they have a, they have like a different layout and, you know, it was a room for fifty people, And they set up the table, I mean, it's a lot different and it's run differently than this, I'm not looking for that, but it would have been a nice option. Or if a mom's group, you know, in the winter from, you know, ten to twelve, wanted to have, you know, some moms in the neighborhood rent it, So their kids stay home, kids could run around in the gym on a cold winter day.
That's a good community ed thing.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing that when I've had parents call about that, or mothers call, I will tell them that, if you'd like, I would be more than happy to put you on the council agenda. You can come and make a request to use the community center, and maybe the city council would allow you just to use it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so then they never come forward and ask, but-
It's intimidating too, so, I mean, no, I get it, I get it. I mean, maybe we talk with community ed and, and can- See if they manage the rental space, you know, and they take the fee, and then we get the seventy five percent or whatever it is, And community ed gets twenty five percent of the rental fee, and, and they manage it, but then, you know, I know there's extra with, you know, getting keys And unlocking the building and-
I don't, I really wouldn't want them managing it, because we have problems now where they don't always verify- They don't always verify events and stuff, the calendar would get mixed up and, oh, yeah.
But I tell, a couple of things.
Still do it, we could do something where they have, maybe it's, uh, the, every Monday afternoon for the month of December and January, To open gym for families from one to three, or one to two or something, or noon to two, but-
Or the weekends or something, cause you're gonna have kids company here, mm-hmm, in the afternoon. Well, yeah, I mean, that changes things a little bit, but, you know, for the weekends, if there's not a wedding going on or another event, you know, just another opportunity For us to get some more revenue, to help pay for some of these improvements on the facility. Why, why do you suppose it goes down about a thousand dollars every year?
Well, I think Mayor Loosen High isn't using it as much as they used to.
Okay.
If you look at that, and then, and I think, um, I don't know, well, fifteen or sixteen, and we haven't gone through the whole year yet type.
Oh, there you go.
So we should be back up to that six or seven thousand.
Um, have, I'm sorry, have you looked into any kind of, oh, do we have to do anything else for insurance if we do have kids company here? That might be-
They have to provide the insurance, that's in the contract.
So that's gonna be an additional?
They're, on them. They have to provide us with a certificate of insurance.
I think we should run it past our guy, just-
Okay, I can do that.
He knows. Just in case, we need anything else.
Okay.
With kids company here, is it gonna affect the banquets? Are they night banquets or weekend banquets?
Weekend, sometimes on Fridays.
Okay.
Fridays, and that, that was part of the contract too, if you look, it was a ninety day notice. Well, on Fridays, sometimes people get Friday to decorate before the Saturday wedding. We'll just have to let them know they can't come back for Friday afternoon, And they were fine with that, if we give them a ninety day notice. So we just have to be vigilant about letting community ed know. And we have rentals out to twenty seventeen already, we can go out and tell them, we, people rent it early, very, very early.
And you can always ask the people for the wedding rental, are you gonna be here, if you're gonna be here a- after six, then you don't have to tell kids company to move, But if they need to be here during the day. Yeah, why can't they just come in later?
We've, you've given them the Friday before to decorate, so do you wanna keep doing that?
Well, you could just do any time after, after six o'clock on Friday.
They get after six o'clock on Friday to decorate.
Decorator, but-
Right.
It takes a long time to decorate, but-
Yep.
Well, I was thinking more of the banquets, like the Ducks Unlimited or some of those.
Yep, they usually come in on Fridays, they're usually on Fridays.
Mm-hmm.
So then, then we would just have to notify, and we already know when they're gonna be here for twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
Cause they've already rented it. So we just have to notify community ed, and they said that then they would just keep the kids in Watertown that Friday, And they wouldn't bring them back for the afternoon. They'd have them here in the morning, and then parents would have to pick them up there in the afternoon.
Yeah, cause I think there was even an FFA banquet here.
Yes, on a Sunday though, that is. FFA is on Sunday.
Yeah, I, I was just concerned, some of those banquets are important to the community.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You know, and they were very receptive to working with us on it, yeah. And some of those, some complies, yeah. No, they're very clean too. I mean, when we're, when I show up, like, right at the end of the day, I mean, every, they're, everything's put away, I mean, Cause I do temporary classrooms, so I think part of their end of the day process will be putting everything away as if they were never here.
Right.
I think it's gonna be worth the part, I'm excited.
With, with, with kids company and moving forward here, did you see any ability to partner with the library? Is that, is that gonna throw another?
I don't know, hadn't thought about that.
You know, we talked about having a portable computer that people could sit down and-
Looks like it may, but, but remember, kids company is here after eight o'clock, they're gone, and they're not back till two in the afternoon. So if we do that, those library hours, maybe are between eight and two, that'd be the only time they could come and get them.
Yeah.
Maybe we do something like that, or eight and one, or whatever, so that we work, we make those, that's what we could do.
Okay, well, I just-
That's a good point though.
Trying to work it all together, you know, and-
Right.
It's exciting.
Cause she was pretty excited when we talked about the computer part, we didn't talk about it at the meeting, you know, being a, Digitally, electronically connected, um, we said, hmm, what about having a workstation where people could work on it? And she says, that's great, I, she never thought of it, so. It's all good.
Alright, concession stand?
Yes, Nikki wanted that on here, wanted to know about renting the concession stand and-
Oh, yeah.
We do offer it for rent, but we've never had anybody take this up on the rent. The park board has a rental policy for it, and there's a form and everything, so.
But it's, again, I think it's just, maybe when we look at rent, doing the whole, um, Renting it maybe for a couple hours instead of thing, or we put that together, maybe we could put together a fun, like, not a fun, but like a, a nice rental seat That just lays out all the different things that you can rent and the fees, and then posting that on Facebook and just letting people know, like, Did you know, cause when the library came, came in, I had no idea that I could use that lydia dot com for free, you know, just, You know, people look at the website, but, you know, I haven't looked at it for a while, you know, just kinda refreshing people, like, hey, did you know That you could rent the community center for a birthday party, you know, and, you know, it's whatever that looks like, And then say, did you know that you could rent the concession stand? No. Well, you should be.
So we'll come up with-
Market it all night tonight. Every single night, it's all marketing.
So we'll come up with an ad for the con- the concession stand and have you take a look at it before we post it on Facebook.
Well, yeah, cause what if a family is having like a family get together, a reunion, and they didn't know they could rent that space, And you've got that nice shelter and the picnic tables, and, you know, we did a, a fireman's family picnic there a couple of years ago. It was perfect, cause I had running water, had electricity, we had all these crock pots, and we had the picnic tables, and then the kids played up at the park, And we had a fun little softball game going on.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you gotta spend how much money on that stand that gets used just a few times a year, I think.
Can I add one more?
I don't care, it's your meeting, why are you looking at me?
Um, in the past, we looked at contracts, reviewing contracts.
Mm-hmm.
How do we proceed with maybe doing the engineer, reviewing engineering services? I talked to Jerry about it, and he said we'd have to bring it up on the work sessions.
He, he, it was on the agenda, and then I took it off since he wasn't here, and asked him what it was about. And he just said that next time we do a big project, he'd really like to see us maybe go out for an RFP for the engineer on the project. That's what he wanted to do.
Okay, and in the past, we talked about, you know, our consulting services, like, I don't know if waste management fell into that, But, you know, the contracts were every three years or five years, we're gonna look at reviewing, completely reviewing them or something. As we move forward, so, I don't know if the committee versus the council, how you feel about that.
I think it's discussed every year, and there's reasons why we keep our people like engineers and, uh, John Anderson, And those people that, uh, the lawyer, they have our history, they, you know, it's, it's just, would be so much to, to change, And I think they're fair, um, I don't know, I can see, you know, comparing them to other people, but I don't know if we need to Review their contracts, and I don't know, whatever, so. We talk about it every year though, you know? And every year we decide not to do it for s- whatever reason.
Well, I just, you know, there was some conversation about the percent that we got charged on the roundabout, And some of the engineering fees on, uh, wetland projects, and, you know, without doing some type of an RFP For services, you don't know where you stand. Um, and it's pretty common for cities, every few years to review. Not necessarily saying you're gonna change them, but, um, and maybe we wait till Jerry has that conversation.
So in January, when you do the annual appointments, is when you ought to be talking about it before you do those annual appointments.
And didn't Martini say at the last meeting that they had exceeded their not to exceed amount, so they did work that they didn't get paid for on that roundabout?
And on the wetland, on the wetland.
That one too, yeah. And I think that's how we pretty much control it, is-
Get the not to exceed number.
Not to exceed number, and, and, uh, I don't know.
Alright, number seventy knocked off, right?
Yep, number eight. Use of the popcorn machine. So we had a, a graduation party in here last weekend, and they asked if they could use the popcorn machine, and I let them use the popcorn machine, Just because I, I did. Do you want the public using it, or do you not want them using it? As long as they clean it up, does it matter? Do we want to charge a rental fee? What do you wanna do? They brought their own popcorn and their own oil, and they just used the machine. What do you wanna do? What do you want me to do?
It was a donation from the ball club, so just let them use it.
Yeah, as long as they clean it.
Yeah, well, that's-
I'm fine with that, I just-
Hardly ever clean it, but, you know, not-
Yeah, it was a donation from the ball club, I know, and that's why, okay, I just wanted to know.
I mean, they, I think it'd be interesting to talk about the whole, you know, if you come and clean the facility after you use it, as opposed to the, you know, paying that, that fee. I mean, I, I like that idea, you know, but-
Someone to come and inspect it, make sure that it's done right.
Do you do that for just the hourly rentals, or do you, you know, with the weddings, so they get that dirty, that?
I think the hourly rentals, I'd be okay with, but weddings and anniversaries, big events.
Yeah, I think we need somebody to clean it after, that's all, but definitely.
Because they don't wanna clean it up.
And then they also check to see if things are broken after those big events, and, you know, it's, it's easy to hide things and get your deposit back, And if you're doing it yourself.
And right now, all they do is mop up the spills anyway, see if janitor comes in and does the big work, and they gotta dig the garbage out, and that's about it. Take all the tables, the likes of the big weddings, but for maybe a birthday party or something like that, might be okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think so.
But let's look at that.
I think we should just make sure we have the, you know, cause even when I clean up after something, like, I don't even know where things are to clean up. You know, like, after- Sometimes you don't want people in there though, I, you have to be careful.
Sometimes I think you have to have, you let them bring their own to clean, cleaning supplies.
Anything else?
All I have.
Uh, Roger?